Hey, I will call our Downers Grove Public Library and Board of Library Trustees. February twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two meeting to order. Caitlin, can you proceed to the roll call papers?
Trustee Dory, yes. Trustee Van Damme, yes. Trustee Moncrief, yes. Trustee Grayber.
Here, thank you very much. Now on to Agenda Item Number Three. Welcome to visitors. Uh, welcome into our meeting. Um, we're now onto Agenda Item Number Four. Approval of the January twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two regular meeting minutes. Did anyone have any questions or comments regarding last month's minutes? Okay, we have a motion to approve last month's minutes as presented.
It's on the second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve last month's minutes as presented that has been seconded. Um, Caitlin, can you proceed to the roll call papers?
Trustee Dory, yes. Trustee Van Damme, yes. Trustee Moncrief, yes. Trustee Grayber.
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved last month's minutes. And we're now on to Agenda Item Number Five, Financial Matters. Julie, so how are we doing?
So we have the FY twenty-twenty-one final, um, financials. Those do change a little bit when they do the audit, but, um, this is pretty much set. Uh, you will see that we received one hundred and two point seven three percent of our revenue and we spent ninety-six point nine percent of our expenditure budget. So we were right on track. And for the library, um, capital replacement fund, we only spent about sixty-one percent of our budgeted, um, allotment for that, uh, because the roofing project was a lot. So, yeah, awesome. Uh, and then for FY twenty-twenty-two, uh, being one month through the year, we're at eight point three percent through the year. We only have point eight-eight percent of our revenues collected, and that's typical for, um, July or for January. As you remember, um, most of our, um, uh, revenue will be posted, uh, in June, um, and September because that does come with the property tax money, um, in the meantime. And on expenditures, we are at six point nine percent, uh, spent for expenditures. And our library capital replacement fund has two large, um, items, uh, for payment this month. Those are the first two of this year, one toward the electrical relay panel project and one as the deposit for the elevator project.
Can you find again on the, um, this page here, um, looking at page, I think it's page eleven, mark eleven.
Yes, our bond balance.
Yeah, and the, I think that is probably a year ago or something like. What, you know what causes the discrepancy between cash and investments of a million one hundred and forty dollars versus the fund balance of nine hundred and four, under the library fund? The building and capital and equipment to place a fund is the exact same. Now, library fund is like fifty-two thousand dollars. It's, if there's a difference between the cash and investments and the fund balance.
I do not recall what that difference is. Caitlin, do you recall? I, I will, I will ask the, uh, the village's finance department. It may be something like unposted.
Yeah, that, that's where I thought there was some, like in the way that they keep track of the different balances. Is there something that lags or something gets posted early and something else comes in after the math, but.
I vaguely remember having answered this question before, but I don't remember what the answer was. So we will find out and we'll report on that at the next meeting.
Thank you.
So a casual question that I'm just curious. Um, we know that we have the villages, that we make use of the villages' reserves to cover the lack of revenue for six months of the year. But on the, on the, on the report here shows that we've got fifty-three thousand in revenue in half a quarter and fifty thousand in expenses. Does anybody ever ask about that? I mean, does the public government know or ask about that?
No, we do not have anything to worry about about that.
Just curious.
That is, uh, through the intergovernmental agreement that we have with the village that allows us to utilize their bond balance when the library goes into the red, um, at the beginning of each fiscal year until we collect them or.
Yes. Okay, any other questions or comments regarding the financial matters?
I think I have a good question. Um, this is on last year's, uh, revenue by average report, line forty-five oh-two charges for services. It looks like the estimate was ten thousand and we came in at twenty-four two hundred and two. What was kind of the main driver of that revenue amount?
So I can look back at the chart and believe that during the, not only is it charges for services like printing and photo packing and all of that, but it is the line of the village departments use for miscellaneous revenue. So if you get a refund no matter because of invoice recepancy or, uh, definitely that's a reason. But yeah, the miscellaneous revenue that doesn't fit into the other categories, they would probably still fit in that lot. So that's kind of skewed the numbers.
I mean, sounds odd, like especially given COVID and all that stuff, like.
And they actually did have a large, um, Shalesman, uh, there was a large refund that he made that did happen for about a while.
All right, awesome.
Oh, you know what I think it was? I think it was one of the, um, uh, one of the rebate things with the energy efficiencies. Yes, rebates go back.
Because rebates go into that one as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is interesting just looking at that with, um, you do have, the property taxes came in pretty low.
Yep.
And so it was, it was the other stuff that kind of pushed us, you know, the three, you know, almost three percent over. All right, any other questions on the financial matters? Do we have a motion to approve the financial matters as presented?
Sure.
Uh, second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the financial matters as presented that has been seconded. Caitlin, can you proceed to the roll call papers?
Trustee Dory, yes. Trustee Van Damme, yes. Trustee Moncrief, yes. Trustee Grayber.
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved the financial matters as presented. We're now on to Agenda Item Number Six, Public Comment on Agenda Items. Do you have any public comment? All right, any public, we're on to Agenda Item Number Seven, Public Comment on Other Library Business. Okay, thank you very much. Yeah. Um, we're now on to Agenda Item Number Eight A, Product Architecture Workroom Reconfiguration Letter of Agreement.
So, so this is the project that we added to the capital replacement fund for this year that may carry over into next year. Um, this is what will get us started on the planning process. We had an initial meeting, um, it was originally supposed to be in January, it happened in February, um, where Dan Port and Tiffany Nash from Product Architecture, who are our usual team for our projects, came out along with John Shales and Mike and Jason Perkunis from Shalesman, to talk to us about the project, what our vision was, what our budget is, what, what our priorities are to get, get a look at what we're gonna do. And this is the letter of agreement, all of our letters of agreement with the architect become addenda to our original, um, AIA contract with them. So we're just adding new scopes of work each time. They have, uh, one with a flat sheet for this project, and that does include the, um, the planning process for this, um, for this renovation, which would engage each of the departments that are involved, whose workrooms will be affected, to make sure that we're hitting everyone's priorities as best.
And is there like a high level, I'm sure you've gone through this at the prior meetings, but it's kind of a high level, um, like what goals are intended to be achieved as purpose?
Okay, so at the moment, Access Services has more workstations than they have employees. One of the services folks actually has a desk in the Access Services workroom. We have, are also adding a new assistant manager in the Children's Services Department. So they are short at least two workstations. For the Maintenance Department, they have just Ian's office and that little shop storage area and the desk that backs up to the soft kit. So, um, what we're looking at is a reconfiguration that would possibly use some of the existing maintenance area to expand Children's Services a little bit, taking part of the Access Services workroom, making the interior more efficient to their actual workload today, and using the other end to make a maintenance workroom and office, if we can. Uh, and then the IT is, workroom renovation would just be furniture, primarily storage. They need storage badly. Um, when it was redone in twenty-fourteen, they chose open shelving on most of the walls for storage, except the shelving's not deep enough for most of the items that they have to store. So they took that shelving down and now they have a significant lack of storage. So we're looking at how we can make that more efficient, including possibly, um, putting some cabinetry behind the computer help desk to store things like our anything emporium items, some of which are going live. Um, and then there is, there's another piece that's kind of, um, snuck into this, and that would be, we have some issues with the circulation desk and the Masques desk. The laminate is coming off of both of those desks. And the ATS team has asked for a reconfiguration of their desk. If you've noticed that since COVID, they have been using other tables to create a quadi desk facing the opposite direction. So the desk, the way it is now, they sit facing inward and they want to face outward. So some desk reconfiguration may, we're thinking that that will be an add alternate to this.
Is there a way, this is more of a comment for Dan, and, you know, as he does this, is that, like, is there some way to, like, make it so that if there are, because the way the library outbreaks in, it may not be the way it outbreaks in years from now. And is there a way to kind of, like, exactly, I'm thinking of like that furniture where you can kind of piece it together and make it larger and smaller and like whether we could do something that maybe anticipates some of these, you know, changes that may happen now.
Exactly. And that's one of the reasons that you think some of that modular office furniture is always attractive. Um, and one of the biggest drivers to each of these areas is that storage is a significant part of what we need to do. Um, if you remember being in our Children's Services workroom, and we could take a little walk, um, we can put it on the agenda for our next meeting to take a little walk through these spaces if you would like. But, um, there's a lot of stuff. Thank you, a lot of stuff. So we need some better ways to store there. The IT is not the only one. We have some significant storage.
Well, I don't want to make a lot of work for the departments. Make things nice for the board, but it'd be kind of fun to see some.
Yeah, I have a question. Julie, like the, um, like where the relations people are in the background, that group also needs that same IT or that, like, can you talk about having a space with ICOM staff that they needed to have a space to go and talk privately? Is that going to be something that's part of this scope of work?
Not part of this scope of work, but possibly a, a change we are able to make because of this scope of work.
Okay.
Um, yeah, it's, here's the thing. We can make Ian an office, we can make this area, and we free up one of the offices in the admin department. And we've got the one room for the storage and, uh, we basically started using it as storage in a tiny conference room. Um, it would be really nice to be able to make some changes in, in that office area. But that would be a tangential, that, that would happen following this.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Just about the timing of the project. And is the timing of the project, in that, what's it, like, so is it a different thing for the optimism project in terms of?
Uh, it's probably timing of the project. Um, in talking to Shalesman about, um, the scope of work and the timing that would work best for the contractors that we would be attracting. Um, they're really looking at fall, winter would be the absolute earliest, probably more like a winter project. Since it's completely interior, it works well in the winter.
Side line, I have a question. Uh, the last thing you wanted to get to side four and so, you know, keep me up to date with the questions.
That's why we kept Dan and Tiffany. We threw out some ideas and we handed them everything and they didn't tell us we were crazy. So we're, we're making it a something.
I think we need to give reasonable workspaces and storage areas for our employees to take care of. Here. The other question though is, uh, this is almost a flimsy little question. I don't think I really want an answer to this question. I think this is, if I think back more years than I have to be thinking about it, but I have heard the term de-lamination a lot of times. And I know what it is. Um, I guess I just wonder if there's something other than laminate that we ought to be looking at, but, uh, that's not my job. So just kind of, seems like laminate always do that.
Is it up there?
Anyway, I'll say it.
Okay, any additional questions or comments regarding Agenda Item Eight A? Do we have a motion to approve the Product Architecture Workroom Reconfiguration Letter of Agreement?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the Product Architecture, Product Architecture Workroom Reconfiguration Letter of Agreement that has been seconded. Caitlin, can you proceed to the roll call papers?
Trustee Dory, yes. Trustee Van Damme, yes. Trustee Moncrief, yes. Trustee Grayber.
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved Agenda Item Eight A. Now we're on to Agenda Item Eight B, the Nibli Oteka Annual Service and Maintenance Agreement Renewal. I think I, this is, this is now like, uh, you're grabbing on to it.
Yes. Yes, this one, this one is an annual, so it comes back to you every year. Um, we did buy those new, um, self-checks right at the beginning of, right, the start of COVID. So they have finally come off their, uh, first year of warranty that's included in the purchase price. So that's why our, um, price has gone up pretty significantly. Um, but it has dropped significantly. And we are actually below the amount that we were paying prior to purchasing those new, um, the, it was forty-two thousand a year before, um, we purchased those new units. And now we're down below forty.
I know.
Oh, that.
Yeah.
Do we have any questions regarding the Nibli Oteka Annual Service and Maintenance Agreement Renewal? We have a motion to approve. Okay, we have a motion to approve, uh, the Nibli Oteka Annual Service and Maintenance Agreement Renewal that has been seconded. Caitlin, can you proceed to the roll call papers?
Trustee Dory, yes. Trustee Van Damme, yes. Trustee Moncrief, yes. Trustee Grayber.
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved Agenda Item Eight B. We're now on to Agenda Item Eight C, Personnel Policy Updates to Sections three point five five, sick leave and three point six one, Victims Economic Security and Safety Act, A Aggregative VESA.
So, um, the sick leave, what we found is that, um, a lot of folks were confused about the language that we had had in there. So we decided to make it, um, very clear. Um, it's consecutive work shifts. And if you miss three consecutive shifts, then you have to have a doctor's note before returning. Um, one of the things, we were finding that this was partially an equity issue that, especially for our part-time staff who don't have, um, health insurance with us, they were having, uh, trouble getting in to a doctor and having to pay to go to like an urgent care to get a doctor's note because they had missed a, a shift but weren't scheduled for several days and then missed a shift mainly because a child of theirs was ill. And so having to take someone to the doctor to get the note to come back, um, it was really becoming an economic burden. So we, we wanted to streamline this. We did a survey of other libraries and this is the common practice.
All right, here's, um, my question's, I was reading, this is like, I don't, I, for me personally, I don't really understand a required for the doctors. I mean, you have, I mean, you get a certain amount of sick leave. And I mean, we're all adults, we're working here. And like, it, it just, to me, it just seemed like something that you've got to chase somebody down to get their doctor's note. And I can think of situations where I've been in where I shouldn't go to work, but I'm also not really sick enough to like, I don't want to go to the doctor. And then, or if, or if I need to go to the doctor, then I need to, maybe I go in that third day when I should actually stay at home. You know, so it just, it just, to me, like, is there, it, we can always reincorporate it back in. I just, I'm not sure what, what are your thoughts on just?
Um, part of it is the, um, making sure that people are well enough to return, that they're not returning too quickly. Um, and part of it is kind of a stopgap to keep people from abusing sick leave. Um, we could try without.
Yeah, I don't know. What are the other board members?
I'm curious, is it a contractor to the doctor to charge? Who's going to know?
Well, they don't have insurance.
Yeah, if they don't have the insurance, you have to go to it. They don't charge for the notes, they charge for the business and then provide for them.
Okay, so.
They are going to urgent care and then they're charging.
Well, that's not.
Yeah.
Well, to me, to me, the other thing that, again, I'm not here day to day to, you know, to know kind of what the situation's on the ground, but I don't want somebody coming back if they shouldn't, if, if they're at that point where they're like, look, I don't really, I'm on the mend, I don't need to go to the doctor, but I also, it's my third day. And that, it just, I, I don't know. That, that was my reaction to it, I guess.
And it's after the third consecutive shift. So you can take the three days off after that fourth one, that's when you need that. So you go to the doctor on the fourth day.
Well, and we also have, I mean, to, to me too, like the, the idea that if someone's abusing like sick leave, it's like, that's not good for your career, it's not good for your, like, there's all these other things that sort of flow from it that just not a good idea. I mean, that's not, so it kind of can take care of itself through kind of, you know, other ways like this.
I think that's a challenge of having PTO versus sick time and not just your time off that you spend while you're sick, you know? So I think if you are to have a distinction of sick time versus vacation time, there needs to be some sort of parameters to that and that, I mean, I mean, I see what you're saying, like, you would hope that everyone's responsible enough to not abuse sick time, but the problem is if people are using sick time, they're also probably not leaving their desk covered and maybe they should or, you know, whatever. I just think that it gets into that and then raise up to really, like, maybe it could be twice before you take that other day off and your little border line should be okay.
Well, and I'm also very comfortable with just proceeding as drafted, so we don't have to, you know, put this on hold and then draft something else. But just, maybe it's just like something to think about, like, it, it, you know, have this policy and then, you know, think about that as like, like, maybe that's something we worked towards over time.
Yeah. And one of the things that's coming up through the Equity Strategic Plan is the idea of reviewing our policies and procedures with an equity lens. So this might be something that we can put on the radar for that.
Yeah, I think that's just very appropriate. I can see it as an issue, especially for somebody who's only working now for something, wasn't that insurance? I'm using it thoroughly to give up career. And it might encourage somebody to come and work.
There's, there's more discussion in your experience.
Yes. Yes, it is. Um, and then the second half is the Victims Economic Security and Safety Act, that VESA. There were some changes to the VESA Act this year, um, for victims of violent crimes. And it also includes, uh, adding gender, domestic, sexual, gender, or other crimes of violence. So Caitlin put this together for us, um, and she primarily used the language directly from the statute.
Yes.
It's, it's in there because those who need it need it.
I approve the updates of the policy in sections, uh, VESA, as presented with the understanding that we align the possible changes.
We have a second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the Personnel Policy Updates to Sections three point five five, sick leave and three point six one, Victims Economic Security and Safety Act. It has been seconded. Dave's comment also included in that motion. Um, Caitlin, can you proceed to the roll call papers?
Trustee Dory, yes. Trustee Van Damme, yes. Trustee Moncrief, yes. Trustee Grayber.
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved Agenda Item Eight C. We're now on to Eight D, the VAB Replacement Proposal.
As you all know, uh, VAB replacements are in the capital replacement fund budget annually from now through the end of the term of our replacement.
Yes.
No, to the end of time, not quite that long, but close. So we did not do any in twenty-twenty-one. So Ian is ready to do the next round. We do purchase the, um, equipment directly from Crane and then H's Mechanical, who are our, um, HVAC provider. Then, uh, then there are professional maintenance contractors.
Very good.
They install the, the various locations.
Masks must cover your nose, hand, and mouth.
I hope, I hope the numbers were good for this, but.
It's twenty-five thousand for, but we have a professional services agreement with, um, H's Mechanical because they are our provider.
Okay.
For HVAC, so.
What about the Train? Soulbender?
That's their soul bender because we have a Train system and we cannot use non-Train. So Train would just send us back to our local.
Okay.
People. So that makes these a little easier than some of our other construction projects because we don't have to go through the whole bidding process.
Very important piece to put in. More about VAB replacements than I ever wanted to, I want to learn more here.
Yes. Yeah, your heating and cooling and building of this size does not work unless your VAB is.
Yes, we have a motion for, with respect to the VAB replacement proposal.
I will move to approve the VAB replacement proposal.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the VAB replacement proposal. It has been seconded. Caitlin, can you proceed through all of these?
Trustee Dory?
Trustee Beatty? Yes.
Trustee Moncrief?
Yes.
Trustee Toots? President Greer?
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved the VAB replacement proposal. We're now on to agenda item nine A, COVID-19 Response and Phase Reopening Plan.
And I will be so happy, I mean, this is not on our agenda anymore. So, thank you so much to Jen and our management team who worked without me to make the next step in early February and make some decisions about reopening the conference rooms and restarting in-person programming. They did a great job and started locking things back. And then, of course, the governor made his announcement. And so we again sat down as a management team and our decision for the library is to go to masks optional when the indoor mask mandate in the state of Illinois is lifted. There was some talk about whether or not we should have, require masks of unvaccinated staff, et cetera. But if they're going to lift this mandate completely, it's just a fight we don't want to fight anymore. We've all kind of lost our energy on that. The only masks we will require is for children and family programs with little people. And those will be required, we'll revisit it after, as we get toward the end of March and see how things are going. We also want to see how things go with school mask mandates. One of the things that we do know is, of course, for our kids' programs, it is very often difficult to social distance, especially if we're running the program at full capacity. So we're going to stick with that. The play areas and the play cafe remain closed. We're not quite done with the renovations of the play cafe, so that's another good reason. Not quite, we're not quite there yet. And Ian has been very focused on the electrical relay panel project. So work is kind of halted there at the moment. Other than that, it will be weird to be in this room and unmasked for the March meeting, which is what we anticipate. There is also a giant question mark on what the governor is going to do about the emergency declaration and how long the option of doing fully revoked meetings will remain an option for units of government like ours. And there's also been some talk that there may be some permanent changes to open meetings that, Open Meetings Act, that would allow for more robust electronic attendance.
Is it, I think this is the latest I've heard, but is, if one of us were revoked tonight, would we be still able to vote?
Yes, and that would be okay as long as there was a quorum physically present in the room. So particularly with our vacancy, there would have to be four in the room so only one person could be revoked. And then.
That's valid for meetings together.
Right, right, that's the, under the norm.
And that's, that's been a case for quite a few years.
Yes, yeah, that, that's from kind of inception of the most recent.
Well, it's ten while you're on vacation, but you can't do that with a quorum.
Right. You can, you can vote, but the physical quorum must still be in the room.
One of the things, a number of organizations that are struggling with this if we, assuming they call, so the governor is going to make masks optional, so Monday or Tuesday or something like that. But there are some organizations, the CDC changes that, we're in every week, but there are some organizations, sometimes including the CDC, that still recommends masks, not requiring, recommending. And so some organizations are saying, masks are not required, but it's okay wearing them. And then I heard one group that was considering a phrase, something like that, if you want to respect your fellow customers, you might consider wearing one. But that makes the guy who doesn't want to wear a mask feel like bad guy.
I believe.
And so a lot of organizations have just left all that out and just said purely optional. But I have seen some who would say that, that simply quote a CDC advisory or something like that, not recommending, I mean, that we would not recommend it, we would not urge it, we would not make it bad if they didn't follow it. It's, it's just a very complicated thing. I hope it goes away soon, but our policy has been made as purely optional.
And we are planning to retain signage that says that masks are recommended and to continue to offer masks at each of the public service desks and at the entrance of the kids' room for anyone who would like to walk in while they're here.
Somebody said, why are you recommending it to the CDC?
Exactly.
I think that's fine and I'm looking, maybe you'll react.
And there was, there's some murmurs that the CDC will be doing some updated guidelines either Friday or beginning of next week. So we are also eagerly anticipating their next round of whatever changes they're going to make.
I'm looking, we re, reauthor, let me change this. Yes, reauthorize the library director to continue to make temporary policy changes in consultation with the board president within the parameters of the COVID-19 response, phase reopening plan as presented. David's second motion, yes.
Okay, we have a motion to approve agenda item nine A as presented. Caitlin, can you proceed through all of these?
Trustee Dory?
Yes.
Trustee Beatty?
Yes.
Trustee Moncrief?
Trustee, hold on, sorry. I was reading this man.
Oh.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Trustee Toots? Yes. President Greer?
Yes, thank you very much. We have approved agenda item nine A as presented. And we're now on to agenda item ten, the Library Director's Report.
All right, I think the biggest area for, for you all is this new statements of economic interest. These are very, it's different than it used to be. As I set the sample, there are some general directions that did not used to be on the form that include recommending that you have your federal income tax return and your investment and brokerage statements with you when you are answering these questions. The biggest, the biggest change is that question number one, which is, if you have any single asset that was worth more than $10,000 as of the end of the preceding calendar year and is held in or payable to your name, held jointly by or payable to you with your spouse, or held jointly by or payable to you with your minor child, list any such assets below. In the case of investment real estate, list the city and state where the investment real estate is located. If you do not have any such assets, list none below. Now, then you go to the definitions, which I included there, where they exempt your residence, your vehicle, any retirement or pension funds, college savings such as iPhone nines and prepaid college tuition funds.
Mutual funds.
Mutual funds, so they exempt a whole bunch of things.
Your jewelry.
On, on the positive side here, we have, have heard that the state will be issuing some more information about this next week. So we are very hopeful that they will clarify this. The biggest, and, and the biggest issue that a lot of trustees, boarding commission members throughout the state of Illinois, this is statewide, are having with this is that the statement of economic interest is in public data. So this is available, and you don't even have to FOIA this in, for DuPage County. If you go on the DuPage County website, you can look up anyone's statement of economic interest that they had to file over.
The same age, the same age as what I was thinking about.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. I know, like, all of this.
No, it literally would be, no, no, it literally would be like, like rental, let's say. It would be a stocks, just like you own stocks. But like, this is, this is, yeah, that's why it would be so easy to get, like, if, if someone really wanted to be, didn't want to report it, you could just take a stock. I mean, you could diversify your mutual. I mean, there's, not that.
Yes, it must be specifically exempt 401K, sometimes.
It does say retirement.
Yes, retirement accounts are exempt, yes.
Even if you.
Yeah, it, it's specific.
Well, it's, it's, it's a retirement account.
The good news is.
Even if you invest your own.
The good news is that you have to risk, as I understand it, you have to risk the investments, but you don't have to put the dollar around it.
Yes, that's true.
You just know it's more than $10,000.
But there is a lot of, with, because I didn't see this definition of this today. And it is, it's like, it pulls out, it could be like if you own a business too. Like, there's, there's, there's a lot more things that are, that are like pulled out. So it's, it's kind of interesting as far as like, what are they even getting at here, like?
Right, what are they, what are they?
Right, what are they, they're like, they're all on everything.
Like, the, the questions that I think, for me, are the most, would be relevant if I were looking at whether someone had like, not least an interest or something like that, would be like, who makes gifts to you?
Yeah.
Like, from like, in a governmental position, like, is your, do you have a relative who works for like, somebody within the state of Illinois or one that has received contracts from your library? I mean, there's stuff like that that I think could actually get at versus just some random, like, I have an account, okay, maybe, what is that?
To me, it could almost like, something you would see being done to see if the board are equitable, see if like, boards are diverse and are part of the community. But this wasn't, that was the kind of question. You know, I, I can see that in the books, like, let's see how many of you live in that one, that one. Like, that would be, make more sense to me.
Yeah.
But this was something that felt very.
This was a non-workout.
Yeah.
Yeah, a lot of folks are, are just not reacting well.
Right, I would hope that we would all find some way to deal with it.
Hold on, I would say, just.
There are some, I think, in some smaller towns especially, you know, where people might just say, I'm going to do this.
And that is going to be.
I just read this definition, the last three words on a tangible personal property, that's a baby too. That includes my musical instruments. Some of which, one of the most expensive thing I own, but it qualifies as a, yeah, personal property.
And one of the big sticking points that a lot of, like, as you said, smaller orders, et cetera, are finding is that this is going to be a hindrance to recruiting people to serve on boards because some people may not want to disclose all of their effort. So just letting you all know, that's there. Stay tuned, we'll figure it out. I, I was going to also let you know that the Equity Team, we had a really great meeting last night and made a lot of progress.
Very long.
Yes.
I thought it was very long.
But we made a huge amount of progress on the Equity Strategic Plan and we're really looking forward to getting that to you in the next couple of months. Also, kudos to Jen and to Caitlin and all of the management team who have been working diligently on the Illinois Public Library Annual Report that you will see in next month's board packet. That is due on the 28th as well. And I did include in your packet the ILA reporter articles by Van and Cindy and Ted. Beautiful job on land acknowledgements and the Best Practices Committee about what they did for ILA as an association. And then Van and Cindy talking about how they put ours together and our process with a little sidebar about what some other programs are doing. So that's fantastic. We also have staff going to the PLA annual, or, by annual conference. And Ed, yeah, yeah, Ed Romell, our media lab coordinator. Lauren Gudsalitz, our computer help desk supervisor. And PR manager Cindy Contrue will be talking about the cover-to-cover podcast for the conference. So that, that's fantastic. And then, speaking of podcasts, Van and Cindy were on the PLA podcast that featured this month, talking about land acknowledgements. So that is a wonderful piece and it's been just so great to have our staff really like stretching themselves and, and putting it out there and really trying to get involved and talking about the great things that we're doing here. So, anything else?
I just wanted to say this picture.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, no, but yes.
With the dollars, probably whatever.
Yeah, but yes, and that was, the ILA reporter was actually very, the reporter group were fantastic to work with and they were so grateful that we had high-quality images that they were able to use. So also kudos to our PR staff who have really worked on making sure that we have the equipment and that they have the training to take those very high-quality pictures for you, for you both there and in the discoveries.
All right, thank you. I believe that brings us to agenda item number 11, trustee comments and requests for information. Do you have any trustee comments or requests for information?
I've just heard so many new things tonight that I'm very proud to be a trustee of the library for those staff.
Any additional trustee comments or requests for information? Okay, then we're on to agenda item number 12, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much, everybody.